We're all here with the exception of Councilmember West, who is excused this evening. So now is the time for public comments. Do we have any public comments?
On the public finance authority.
On the public finance authority. Seeing none, okay.
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Any objection?
Nope.
Okay. All right, with that, this meeting is now adjourned.
Give me a minute.
Okay. Moving on now to the blue agenda. Okay. This is the City of Emeryville, a successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Again, we're all here with the exception of Councilmember West. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have public comments for items on this agenda this evening?
Yeah, I want to start a conversation here with Councilmember Kurt Brinkman, Councilmember Ruth Atkin, and Councilmember Nora Davis. I'm not interested in talking to Mayor Asher or Councilwoman Jennifer West. Some people here in the audience may not know, but recently, the Alameda County Grand Jury has made a little finding about the proceedings of the Emeryville City Council. And what they have found is that one year ago, this body, those three people I just mentioned, voted to give a developer in town, Madison Marquette, $6 million out of an $18 million loan, basically to forgive $6 million of an $18 million loan. There were several people at the time, a year ago, that thought that that was a bad idea, myself included. I came up and said, "I don't think it's a good idea." And two council members thought it was a bad idea, and that was Mayor Asher, Councilmember West, thought it was a bad idea to give Madison Marquette a gift of public funds of $6 million. But the three council members thought it was a good idea, and Madison Marquette, the developer itself, also thought it was a good idea. They wanted the gift of $6 million. Well, so the three council members voted to forward this gift of $6 million, and luckily, it was stopped by the successor agency after that vote. But, so the gift was not given to Madison Marquette, a favored developer of this council majority. Now, many months later, the Alameda County Grand Jury has weighed in on that vote that this council took, at the behest of the city attorney, Mike Biddle, and the then-city economic developer, Helen Bean, now retired. The Alameda County Grand Jury has found, in an independent report, that it was really amateurish. That vote was wrong, wasn't illegal, but it was wrong, and that this city is run by people, like, for instance, Mike Biddle, the city attorney, that don't know what they're talking about when it comes to finances, or Helen Bean. So the vote, the city council was told to do this by those two staff members, and the Alameda County Grand Jury said that those two staff members are amateurs, and that they're basically, essentially dilettantes. So, we got bad advice from the staff members. So three council members got hoodwinked by the bad advice.
Your time is up, Mr. Donahue.
Two didn't. And I'll talk about this more later. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments?
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Status report on Oversight Board legal expenditures. We don't have anything there. And information in status report, nothing there either, right? No? Okay. And with that, that meeting is now adjourned, so done with the blue agenda. We're moving right along here this evening. We're now looking at the green agenda. This is the Emeryville City Council regular meeting. Again, we're all still here with the exception of Member West. Oh, yes. You got to catch up?
Well, it's frozen.
Oh.
Uh-oh.
It's frozen. It's slow.
We may have to do things manually then.
Work is fine now.
It's okay now?
Yeah, it's slow.
Okay. Let's see. Special orders of the day, we have proclamations coming up. Okay. Item number three, public comments.
Joyce Jacobs, and I live at Watergate. I just wanted to thank the staff that's responsible for the redesign of medians out on the peninsula. We have a number of medians out there that were totally redone, and they were redone beautifully. And during the spring, when the first flowering was really at its fullest, it was just such a pleasure to drive up and down Powell Street. And they've been not only designed with a lot of good ideas and unusual ideas and a lot of flair, but they've also been very well maintained. So I wanted to thank the city staff for that, because it's a great pleasure for me.
Thank you, Joyce.
Anyone else? Hi.
Hello, my name is John Nady. I sent each of you an email last Friday outlining my proposal for, asking for mitigation of the impact fees for projects that already went along in the entitlement process. I don't have time to go into all the issues on that email, so I asked for it to be put on the record. However, let me summarize as follows. My property at Shellmount is at 6701 Shellmount at 67th Street, adjacent to the Shellmount Ashby exit. My business, Nady Systems, has been operating there for over 24 years. However, the building is 50 years old, in need of constant and expensive maintenance, and no longer suitable for our operations. In fact, we've been looking for another location, another building, for some time. Also, the best use for the property, as determined by the city planners and the general plan zoning a few years ago, is for residential. After about a year of negotiations, 16 months ago, I entered into a contract with Avalon Bay Community for development of residential on that property. Application for the city, for approvals, was done about a year ago, and in fact, approvals are almost complete, and perhaps the final permit hearing is scheduled for July 24th in front of the Planning Commission, only a few weeks away. However, the city's plan for an anticipated fivefold increase in impact fees for the residential development have caused Avalon Bay to cancel its contract, purchasing contract, and to pull out of the project. I'm asking the city to mitigate the proposed impact fee ordinance, exclude from its reach residential developed projects, residential development projects like our own that have been in the, that have been, have already applied for approvals at considerable expense and time and effort. Half a dozen other development projects, I believe, are in the same situation, although I'm not aware of the details. The city will not reap impact fees and other benefits from major development projects that are canceled. The impact fees, which I understand are around $5 million on our project, was not figured into the project costs and make development projects, development of some projects already in the city's approval process economically unfeasible. The proposed impact fees are, in that sense, retroactive and unfair to the property owners who bear the burden. I understand that exempted from the fees, Avalon Bay may resume.
Mr. Nady, you'll have, we're having a public hearing about this.
One sentence. I got one sentence.
No, the time is up. You can be heard during the public hearing about this item if you'd like to wait.
I heard that comment, and I'm, from Mr. Nady, and I got to say that we all have to get out our, the world's smallest violin here, after hearing that. But back to my comments earlier, the Alameda County Grand Jury. So the Grand Jury just released this report saying the City of Emeryville is run by dilettantes, essentially, and that we don't know what we're doing. We've got, this is a city with hundreds of millions of dollars in, that we are controlling in our budget, many millions of dollars, and that it's being run by people that don't know anything about finances. Now, Mr. Brinkman is smirking at me. Now, that was a smirk. But this is not me speaking. This is the Alameda County Grand Jury. Now, I don't know if you've read the report, but you should read it, because it's, it's an eye-opener. Basically, it says that the staff here at Emeryville doesn't know what it's doing, is not professional enough, doesn't understand finances enough to know about this deal where there were this, they asked, this developer came to you and asked you, asked you to forgive $6 million in their $18 million loan, and wherein you guys said, the three of you said yes. But the Alameda County Grand Jury, the independent Alameda County Grand Jury, determined that the staff is just, doesn't know what it's doing. So there needs to be an accountability here, I think. I mean, I pay my taxes here at Emeryville, and I'm, I'm pretty concerned that, I'm paying my taxes, and it's, and the people that are handling my money don't know what they're doing with money. And that, it is, it causes me some concern. There should be some accountability. This shouldn't just be swept under the rug. I would like to see the three of you who voted for this deal to have, to account for this, because I just think we're owed that. And the three, of course, once again, are called out by the Alameda County Grand Jury, are Mr. Brinkman, Ms. Atkin, and Ms. Davis. So Ms. Bean, the former economic developer, is now retired, so she can't be called to account. But Mr. Biddle, the city attorney, who is part of the deal that recommended that you do this, is still employed by us. So I think there needs to be some accountability, there needs to be some questions asked, rather than just sweeping this under the rug. And anybody watching on television, you can go to the Emeryville Tattler or the Secret News, and you just Google that, and you can read the Alameda County Grand Jury report that explains about how the City of Emeryville doesn't know what it's doing with its own finances, and that the three council members were given bad advice by Mr. Biddle, the city attorney, and that the three council members went with that bad advice. It should be noted that two of the council members could see right through that, that it was, that it was a bad deal. And those two council members are the mayor, Ms. Asher, and of course, Ms. West, the councilwoman. So it was a three to two vote. Three got hoodwinked by bad advice from Mr. Biddle, two didn't. I think there needs to be an accountability moment here, and I think it shouldn't just be swept under the rug. And if there is not an accountability moment, well, you're going to see me talking about it a lot more here, because I'd like to, I'd like to hear some answers about how this went wrong, what you're going to do in the future, moving forward, to protect the residents' money in the future, moving forward, and what you're going to do to get some better, some better advice from our staff, you know, that we were given really bad advice. So I'd like to see, like, you know, what are you going to do about the staff that's giving us bad advice about that? So thanks a lot.
Any other public comment this evening?
Good evening, Council. I want to sit here a second. You know, in response to Mr. Nady's comments, I think we have a different world without a redevelopment agency, and I think we have to recognize that. I mean, the council adopted an ordinance that says, "Well, we're going to increase these fees, and it's going to be retroactive, and we can come back later and ask you for additional money." You know, funding for a project requires that there's some stability of funding. When it's in the process, whatever fees are existing should apply. To go in the middle of a process and just add all kinds of fees is almost unfair. I mean, they've spent a year and a half, million, I don't know how many dollars in planning, but, so I think the marketplace project is in jeopardy. I think these projects are going to be in jeopardy. You know, part of the residents' attitude against development is that developers haven't listened. Well, the management in the past didn't allow the developers to communicate with the residents, and I think that's a problem. But to take that out on other projects going forward is a mistake. So I think you should consider Mr. Nady's request, and probably your request on the marketplace project, and take a look at what you're doing here. There's even a question of whether you can go back retroactively and charge the fees, but nobody with a project in the pipeline is going to bring a challenge against the city if they need a discretionary approval. Thank you.
Scott Donahue, 1420 45th Street. I think that Emeryville is exploring a sustainable future in looking at impact fees. You, as a council, have been doing good work for our future by really considering these fees. We no longer have a redevelopment agency. Impact fees, the principle is, what is the impact of that development on our city? What are the capital costs going forward? They reflect our actual costs. I think we should follow through on that. And if we have to, every project that's in the pipeline, it has the capital costs not accounted for, it's not going to be a sustainable city in the future. Our economic status is at jeopardy. So I really think that you have to think about that. These impact fees are not anything other than what it's going to cost us. That's the principle of them. And we need to have a sustainable city, economic income to our expenses going forward in the future. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comments? Okay, City Manager's Report.
Sure, we have the annual Fourth of July celebration going on, what is it, on Friday? And Cindy, if you could give people maybe the details on timing and what all of that will be?
Yes, it'll be at the Emeryville Marina, beginning four o'clock and ending at eight. There'll be two bands playing, there'll be food available, and so come on down early, because they do close the road.
Thank you. That's it? That's it? Okay. Onto the consent calendar.
I want to pull 5.8.
Okay.
Move the rest of the consent calendar.
Second.
For you? Okay. Anyone opposed? Nope? Okay, with that, we'll pull item 5.8, proclamation of the City Council of the City of Emeryville in recognition of the National Old Lesbians Organizing for Change Gathering, to be held on July 23rd through 27th. And my understanding is that Elena Dykewman is here to accept the proclamation. If you could come forward, please? Just need to read?
Yeah, I will say something.
Okay, yeah. Just know right here at the, at the dais. Yeah, thanks.
Stand behind the podium. I just want to say that Alana and I saw each other at an Emeryville restaurant, and happened to mention that this conference is happening nearby Oakland, and wouldn't it be nice if Emeryville welcomed the conference attendees? So by this proclamation, which the mayor will read, we're welcoming OLOC to the Greater Inner East Bay.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to say anything else?
No, I'm, I'm so excited that you're here. It's a pleasure to have you in council chambers.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Got a written statement from?
Yeah, there'll be a written statement.
Great, thank you very much.
With the mayor's signature.
Yeah. But first, I'm just going to read it so that everybody knows. Okay. Proclamation in recognition of the National Old Lesbians Organizing for Change Gathering to be held on July 23rd through 27th, 2014. Whereas, the Old Lesbians Organizing for Change, OLOC, is a national cooperative community of old lesbian activists from many backgrounds, working for justice and the well-being of lesbians aged 60 and older. And whereas, the OLOC consciously embraces the word "old" to lessen the fear of aging and to challenge the demeaning euphemisms, scorn, invisibility, and expendability normally associated with "old." And whereas, OLOC is committed to addressing what it means to be old and to be lesbian by finding ways to gather groups of old lesbians together for ongoing support and working against all oppressions that affect older lesbians. And whereas, OLOC stands in solidarity with allies that challenge racism, classism, ableism, sexism, heterosexism, homophobia, and religious intolerance. And whereas, the National Gathering of Old Lesbians Organizing for Change will be held on July 23rd through July 27th, 2014, in nearby Oakland, California. And whereas, the City of Emeryville wishes to express solidarity with the work that OLOC is doing to stand up for the rights and needs of the old lesbian community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Jack Asher, Mayor of the City of Emeryville, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim recognition of the efforts of the Old Lesbians Organizing for Change to work for justice and well-being of the lesbian community, especially members of the lesbian community that are 60 and older. Thank you.
Thank you.
This isn't in June, but it's close to Pride Month.
It's July 1st, so. Right after.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Okay, on to, oh, do you want to move the item?
Right.
Yeah, move approval.
Second.
All right. Anyone opposed? Nope? Okay. Onto public hearings. So we have item 6.1, City of Emeryville Public Park and Pain Rehabilitation Consultants Management Group Parking Lot, Charlie.
Okay, Mayor Asher and members of the City Council, you have before you tonight a proposal for a general plan amendment and rezoning regarding the Pain and Rehabilitation Consultants, or PRC as it's known, parking lot at the northwest corner of Stanford Avenue and Doyle Street. By way of background, in November 2008, the City Council approved a 168-unit project called Parkside Residential Project, formerly known as Paper Mill, which encompasses most of that block bounded by Stanford, Doyle, Powell, and Hollis. The project included construction of a public park and a replacement parking lot for 41 privately-owned parking spaces owned by the owners of the building at 1335 Stanford Avenue, which is across the street to the south of this block. In August of 2010, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit for that property at 1335 Stanford Avenue for use as the Pain and Rehabilitation Consultants Office. The PRC use permit was conditioned on the property owner agreeing to a land swap with the city in order to create the public park to be constructed by the Parkside Residential Project. In February of 2010, the council approved a design for the parking lot, park and parking lot upon the recommendation of the Planning Commission. So this is a drawing that shows the configuration of the parcels on that block in the before condition, before the Parkside Residential Project was built or approved. There were two existing buildings here, and then this was the city parking lot in blue, and these are privately-owned parcels in the middle of the city parking lot that contained 41 parking spaces that were owned by the property across the street. So the city property is kind of a donut, or a double donut, with these two private parcels in the middle of it. After a lengthy process, looking at lots of different alternatives, which I, by the way, have in another PowerPoint presentation, if you really want to go through all that again, but I can, I can show you what all those alternatives are, if you don't remember, or if you want to refresher. But anyway, this is what we finally ended up with, which is this private parking lot on the east end of the block, and then the rest of the block would be the park. And then what this looks like in the final design of the project is this. This is just a more refined version of that same scheme. Of course, this park over here is going to be modified a little bit to account for the council's decision to retain the existing trees in this area, but generally speaking, this, this is what it looks like. So this would be the new parking lot parcel. This is the proposed parcel map. It has not yet been approved or recorded, but this is what it is going to end up looking like. So this is the new parking lot parcel for PRC. This is the city park parcel. The two privately-owned parcels that are there currently, one is about here, the other one is about here. So PRC will retain ownership of this one at the east end, and they'll get some additional land around it, and then the city will obtain the one, the PRC parcel, at this end. And the city will still have two strips of land on either side of the parking lot parcel that will be part of the park. So continuing on with the background, when the general plan was adopted in October 2009, all of the parking lot parcels had these designations: land use diagram, mixed use with residential. The maximum FAR was 1.2 to 1.6. The maximum building height was 30 to 55, and there was no residential density designation on the parking, on the city parking lot or the private parking lot parcels. In 2010, when PRC bought their property, the general plan land use map was being used as the interim zoning map under our interim zoning regulations. Therefore, at that time, the zoning of these parcels was MUR, mixed use with residential. When the new planning regulations were adopted in February of 2013, the zoning map re-designated these parcels as park open space, PO. As part of the negotiations for the land swap that they agreed to, PRC has requested that the proposed parking lot parcel be rezoned back to MUR, which was what the zoning was when they bought their property and when they agreed to the condition to exchange property with the city. So, the proposal that is before you is to, first, to amend the general plan to do four things. One, to add a maximum residential density of 20 to 35 units per acre to the proposed PRC parking lot parcel. To re-designate the city-owned park parcel from mixed use with residential to park open space, and remove the other park opportunity circle on the land use diagram, because that is now superfluous. I'll show that to you in a, on a map in a, in a second. Change the maximum heights to 30 feet no bonus for both the city property and the PRC parking lot, and change the maximum floor area ratio designation to 0.5 no bonus for both properties. And also a rezoning to rezone the proposed PRC parking lot parcel from PO, park open space, to MUR, mixed use with residential. So here are a number of maps that show what all that means. The property in question is right here, kind of in the middle of the city. This green circle is the green, is the other park opportunity indication, as shown here in the key. And as you can see, the park now will be this green area here, so there's no need to have both a green designated park and the green park opportunity circle on the map. So we would take off the green circle. Zooming in on this, so you can see it a little bit better. The current designation of this site, of the entire block, is MUR, as it shows here, and these are the two little PRC parcels. We haven't shown the green circle on this map, just for clarity, but it would be on here on the existing map. The proposed general plan land use designation would be MUR for the parking lot parcel and park open space for the city parcel around it. This is the residential density map, and the area in question, again, is right here. This is the PRC parking lot, right there. Zooming in on that, currently, there is no residential density designation at all. This would put the residential density designation on the PRC parcel. And not because they intend to build any residential, but only because there's always a residential density with the MUR land, land use designation, because it's mixed use with residential. That's what the land use designation is called. So if you don't have a density with it, it kind of doesn't make sense. This is the height map. Again, we're looking at this area right here. So in the current situation, the height is, whatever that is, 30 to 55, I believe. And then the proposal would be to drop it to the lowest designation, which is 30 feet with no bonus, and that would be the same as what we have in the residential neighborhood across Doyle Street. I forgot to mention that when we're looking at the residential density, it's also the same as the residential density in the, in the neighborhood across Doyle Street. Then looking at the FAR, the floor area ratio map, and by the way, you should have on your dais a corrected map. We put the wrong map, I apologize for that, in the staff report. It really doesn't have anything to do with this property. It was the Doyle-Hollis North area where we had previously changed the FAR, but, but we put the older map in the staff report, so we thought we should use the current map. put the older map in the staff report, so we thought we should use the current map. Anyway, the current designation is this, 1.2 to 1.6, and the proposal would be to re-designate both parcels to the lowest possible designation, which is 0.5 with no bonus, and that's the same as, again, the property across Doyle Street in the residential neighborhood. So the proposal would be, for the general plan, to drop the floor area ratio, the residential density, and the height limit to the lowest possible categories. Then for the zoning, we're looking at this area right here, again, and the current zoning of this area, of the rest of the block where the Parkside apartment is, is MUR, mixed use with residential. But for the parking lot and the Parksite, it is open space, and the request is to rezone just the PRC parcel to MUR. And by rezoning this this way and changing the general plan land use map as I described, that would make the general plan land use map and the zoning map match each other. This was considered by the Planning Commission on May 22, but as you know, we had a notification problem, and therefore it had to be reconsidered by the commission at their meeting last week on June 26. This time, we did notify everybody by mail within a 500-foot radius, and we included in that mailing the notices for both the Planning Commission meeting on June 26 and this meeting tonight. The commission's vote was three ayes, which were Commissioners Keller, Moss, and Cardoza, and two noes, Commissioners Donaldson and Cumberly. There was one recusal, Commissioner Gunkel, who lives, who owns property within 500 feet of the site, and one absent, Commissioner Tan. This vote of three to two was sufficient to recommend approval of the rezoning, which requires a majority of those present in voting. However, because of something in state law, a general plan amendment has to be approved by a majority of the total membership of the body. So in other words, that requires four out of seven commissioners to approve it, and there were only three at the June 26 meeting. So therefore, the three to two vote was not sufficient to recommend approval of the general plan amendment to the city council, even though it was an affirmative vote, more or less. It should be noted, however, that when the item was first heard by the commission on May 22, the vote was four to two, which was sufficient to approve both the general plan amendment and the rezoning. But Commissioner Tan was absent on June 26. She did vote aye on May 22. So just to summarize the findings here, to approve a general plan amendment, the city council must make findings outlining its consistency with the general plan guiding principles, its internal consistency with other provisions of the general plan, and consistency with any other adopted plans, and those findings are in the resolutions that's before you. When the general plan was being developed, the Parkside project, including the public park, had not yet been approved, so the general plan land use designation for the entire block was MUR, but the potential new park somewhere on that block was indicated with the green circle. By the time the planning regulations had been adopted in 2013, the park and parking lot had been designed, so the new zoning map indicated specifically with those properties as park open space. That's why the general plan and the land use and the zoning map don't appear to match each other, but they are not inconsistent, because the green circle does the same thing in a more general way than the park open space zoning does. So the request to rezone the parking lot provides an opportunity now to bring consistency, or I should say more consistency, between the general plan land use diagram and the zoning map by designating the PRC parking lot parcel as MUR and the park parcel as park open space. Concerning the rezoning, the city council must make four findings: that the proposed amendment is consistent with the general plan, that it's necessary for public health, safety, and general welfare, or will be of benefit to the public, that it's consistent in compliance with SEQA, and that it's, the property suitable for use is permitted in the proposed zone. The proposed amendment to rezone the parking lot from PO to MUR is consistent with the general plan. The parking lot meets the parking requirements of the PRC office across the street, and it's therefore a more appropriate designation is MUR. So our recommendation is that the council introduce the rezoning ordinance after a motion to read by title only, that you then take public testimony regarding both the general plan amendment and the rezoning ordinance, and that the council then approve the general plan amendment resolution and adopt the first reading of the rezoning ordinance, which will then come back to you for a second reading at your next meeting on July 15. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Yeah, I have a question. On what basis were the no votes?
I think there was a concern that something could be built on the property and that it should remain as open space. I should point out that the property is quite small, that it also has, I didn't mention this when I was showing you, but in the parcel map, there's a 20-foot wide easement that will go through the property for a rather large water main that runs under the site, and you can't build anything on top of that. So you'd be left with about half of that parking lot parcel that could actually potentially be developed, and with the lowest possible height limit and FAR and residential density, you're really left with an essentially undevelopable parcel. You could build something on it, but it would be very small. A couple of council, I mean, planning commissioners were not satisfied with that. They didn't want any development potential at all, basically, on the parking lot. I should also note, though, that this is one of the deal points with the doctors for the land swap, and if they don't agree to the land swap, then we won't get our park. So that was the basis of the no votes.
So I have another related question. The zoning passed the commission, so the rezoning.
Correct.
But not the general plan amendment. So there was enough people who thought that the way, the details for this land swap were basically acceptable.
Two, three of the five commissioners who voted, yes.
Right.
Yes, it's really a technicality of state law that the general plan amendment didn't pass.
What would be the other options for zoning on that parking lot?
Well, there are a lot of different zoning districts, but I don't know that any of them would necessarily put any greater restrictions in terms of what could be built. The parking lot is accessory to the building across the street, so that's...
The medical offices need the parking lot, so I don't know why they want to even entertain residential.
Doesn't need a par, oh, does need a parking lot.
Yeah, they need, yeah, they need, they need parking for their patients.
Absolutely. No, it's just, well, perhaps I should defer to them to answer this, but it's just a question of having the zoning be what it was when they purchased their property, because it was rezoned since they purchased their property, and they want it put back to what it was when they purchased their property.
I see.
That's why they wanted MUR.
But that was an interim zoning map, right? So they purchased when it was an interim zoning map.
Right, yes, but it was the zoning at the time. Any further questions?
That's it.
Yeah, I have a question. In terms of the fact that it's relatively unclear about the ordinance and whether or not the Planning Commission, we have a positive recommendation. I think that's very unclear, but that, the Planning Commission is just advisory.
Correct.
The council, even if it doesn't receive a clear message from the Planning Commission, has the ability to make the decision on the issue.
Absolutely.
I'd move to read by title only.
Let's second it.
From the, excuse me, there's a public hearing. We have to hear from the public, it's a public hearing.
Oh, you can still move by title only.
Read by title only first, and then we have the public.
You can do it either way. If you want to take public comment first, that's fine.
Let's take public comment, please. Anyone to be heard? On this item?
This is an issue I haven't, I'm not really up to speed with, although a little bit, and I've listened here tonight and listened another night. First of all, I would like to say the standard complaint that I have to the planning department, and that is, I think we're, the planning department, and I'm speaking now to the city manager and also to the planning director, I don't know why it has to be, or I don't think it has to be, that the staff recommends that you take public testimony and then approve a project. Because if you parse that, what you're saying is, listen to what the public says, but don't really listen to them, and instead, if there's negative comments from the public, don't listen to it, and just go ahead and approve the project. I don't think legally we have to do that, and it may be a sort of accurate way behind the scenes, the way it works here, that the staff and that the council doesn't really listen to the public testimony, and so that way it may be honest, but it causes a lot of cynicism, and, you know, I don't, I don't think we should do that. We don't legally have to do that. I don't think that this city should, should, the staff for this city should recommend that the council take public testimony about a public hearing and then recommend to approve without hearing the public testimony. I just, it really rubs me the wrong way, I think it's creepy. So I would like the city manager to weigh in on this. Do we legally have to do this? Does the staff have to recommend you take public testimony and then approve? Why can't they just say something like, "We recommend you take public, the council take public testimony and then decide what they want to do"? So that's my request to the city manager, for all these public hearings, because this is the way it always goes. It's always the same thing. It's always take public, Mr. Bryant, the planning director, recommends to take public testimony and then approve the project. I think, I'd like to thank Ms. Atkins for, the council member Atkins, for asking Mr. Bryant, the city, the planning director, to tell us what the two, the two planning commissioners that said no to this project, what the content of what they were asked, why they said no. And so I thank you for asking that, him that, and I'm just sort of wondering, why wouldn't the planning director volunteer this? Why did this have to be prompted by Mayor, I mean, Vice Mayor Atkins? I'm just, I just think that the, I mean, it's a weighty subject, and I just think that this...
Thank you.
Mr. Bryant should have just volunteered this information. Thank you.
Hello. I just have to make a couple of comments here. You know, we had the approval of the project, we came up with the idea of having a park, we made it, we made a deal with them for a land swap, the parking lot and the park. So we all thought the deal was carried out, and then we adapted the general plan, and they discovered that that portion of the deal that they made was now zoned open space instead of being zoned as residential. So all that means is that the value of their land is substantially diminished, or zero if it's open space, but it has some value if it does have some zoning and some approval to do something. So all these doctors are trying to do is to retain the value of the deal that they made. So if you don't allow this to go forward, we don't have our park. I don't know if they could legally force this decision, because it was made years ago. So this is a non-issue. And to go into all the details about how something can be built there when it's not feasible, I mean, we're wasting a lot of time. I think we should just approve this and be done with it. Thank you.
Anyone else? You had a motion, didn't you, or?
There's a motion on the floor.
And I would second that.
Okay.
Is to read by title only the ordinance?
That is correct.
Okay. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville amending the planning regulations by modifying the zoning map in figure 9-3.103 subsection A of chapter 3 of title 9 of the Emeryville Municipal Code to rezone the proposed Pain and Rehabilitation Consultants Management Group Parking Lot Parcel at the northwest corner of Stanford Avenue and Doyle Street from PO, Park Open Space, to MUR, mixed use with residential.
Let's take a roll call vote, please.
So that was just to read by title only, and so we've done that?
I have a question for either Charlie or Michael, and this is, when we made that exchange of the land, you know, between the parking lot and getting the park, the language says the land swap requires, requires the designation. What is the power of that? Can we, if we alter that, does everything fall to pieces?
I would defer to the city attorney to respond to that.
The land swap, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
The exchange of land, down when we made the agreement with PRC to exchange that land, when they got their approvals, they were required to do this.
Correctly, correct.
So if we, if we deny this, what happens to that deal and what happens to the, to the park?
Well, they were, in their use permit, they were required to cooperate with the city on the land swap. I mean, we couldn't compel them to finalize it, but they were required to cooperate with us, which they have done.
And Charlie, from your staff report, it appears to me that these actions will bring into congruence the general plan and the zoning.
Correct.
Which are out of conjunction right now.
Well, that's debatable, but the maps don't look identical, I'll put it that way.
I have a question. We keep talking about the value of the land, is, when we talk about park open space, that still permits a parking lot, doesn't it?
I believe it would allow it as accessory use.
Okay, and so that's still got a value to it, right? It's...
The staff, just to clarify, the staff has not been talking about the value of the land. That was a public comment.
Right, okay.
Is someone from PRC here who wants to speak to it?
Yes, yes, they are here.
Can you come forward, please?
I have another question on the ordinance.
Yeah.
On page two of the ordinance, it says, whereas the planning commission held a duly and properly noted public hearing on June 26 and voted to recommend that the city council approve, that's, I don't believe that's a correct statement.
Yeah.
On the rezoning, it is.
Say again, Michael?
I'll let Charlie, but... That's a correct statement on the rezoning. It's not entirely accurate on the general plan amendment. I would just note that based on what happened at the May 22 meeting, we anticipated the vote would be the same on June 26. We didn't know that one of the commissioners would be absent, and that staff report was written and distributed to you before the planning commission took their action. So that's why it's...
Well, I would like to see the ordinance changed, revived, and reflect the actuality of what happened, because this is a misrepresentation.
Certainly, we can do that.
How would you change that, Charlie or Michael?
No, I would not change the ordinance, because it's a correct statement.
Oh, that's right, that's right. This is the rezoning.
The rezoning.
The ordinance is only on the rezoning.
Oh, okay, okay.
Different standard for the zoning.
So it's in the resolution.
It would be, to the extent there's a comparable statement in the resolution for the general plan.
There is in the resolution.
That one we would need to correct.
Okay, I stand corrected.
Ruth, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the PRC folks about your need for parking and if you just want to speak to what your patients need to be able to access your facility.
Yeah, I'm Mayor Asher, members of council, I'm Raymond Buddy, I'm attorney for the Pain and Rehabilitation Clinic. There's 42, I believe, parking spaces that are there now and will be there afterwards for our, for our patients and for access. There is going to have to be some improvement on the path of travel coming from the new parking lot location over to the doors of the clinic. So that will happen. Right now, the parking is at the other side of the street, the side of the block. Parking lot's moving to the other location, and so we're going to have to improve the path of travel. That's part of the plan.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I move approval of the first reading.
And I would second that.
Ken, I would prefer that you take up the issue of the general plan, since there's a, you know, your zoning is an issue to be, needs to be consistent with your general plan, so you ought to take your first action on your general plan resolution.
So 611.
You want a motion on the resolution? You want a motion on the resolution first, before the first reading, before the ordinance?
Correct.
Right, that's the order that they're listed in, in the recommendation from staff.
All right, I move the resolution.
I'll second it again.
And I would just note that from your prior comment, you would like us to amend the third to last whereas to make it clear that, you know, the vote was three to two to recommend approval, but that was insufficient under state and local law to carry the recommendation to the council. So we'll make that type of edit to the resolution.
Very good.
And let's go ahead and have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Brickman?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember West is excused. Vice Mayor Atkins?
Aye.
And Mayor Asher?
No. Okay, 6.12. We've read by title only.
We did that already.
Move the ordinance.
We've already done that, so now we need a motion on the first reading.
Okay, so let's have a roll call on that.
Councilmember Brickman?
Aye.
Did you get a motion?
I'm sorry, I need a motion in a second.
We already have that.
You have a motion in a second.
Davis and Brickman.
Davis and Brickman.
Yeah. Brickman.
My apologies.
Councilmember Brickman?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember West is excused. Vice Mayor Atkins?
Aye.
And Mayor Asher?
No. Okay, on to item 6.2. And Charlie, your back up. This is development impact fees.
No, I didn't. Here's the, what I do is, I just sort of did that.
This is red line. Please, is this name?
Got a couple little handouts here for you.
Oh.
We should make sure there's a-
A few little last minute modifications. Mayor Asher and members of the city council, as your new community development director as of today, it's my-
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to now get to present to you the proposed development impact fees. This is an outline of my presentation. I'll start with a little background, then talk about the impact fee studies that were prepared and the maximum supported fees that they identify, then what the recommended impact fees are that staff is recommending and a comparison with what other cities charge, a summary of what the various advisory, your various advisory bodies had to say about this, some amendments to the municipal code that need to be made before you can impose the fees, and then a little bit about the fiscal impact of these fees. So, background. In 2013, the council directed that impact fees be developed, so we had nexus studies prepared, impact fee studies, for affordable housing, parks and transportation impact fees. As I'm sure you recall, on April 1st, you held a study session and you directed that these proposed impact fees be referred to the various city committees and the planning commission for their review and comment. These are the four impact fee studies that were prepared. We had a transportation impact fee study by Fair and Peers, a parks and recreation facilities impact fee study by Wildan, a residential nexus study by Kaiser Marston and a non-residential jobs housing nexus study also by Kaiser Marston. The last two both relate to the proposed affordable housing fee, one for residential development and the other for non-residential development. Representatives of all of these firms are here tonight to respond to any questions you may have about the impact fee studies. The Mitigation Fee Act, a state, California state law, has several required findings in order to establish impact fees. You have to identify the purpose and use of the fee. If the fee is proposed to finance public facilities such as the park and the transportation fees, those public facilities must be identified. You must demonstrate a reasonable relationship between the fee's use and the type of development on which it is imposed. You must demonstrate a reasonable relationship between the need for the public facility and the type of development on which the fee is imposed and document the maximum amount of the fee. And this is what these fee studies do. In order to evaluate the proposed fees and also to compare our fees with other cities, we prepare, we came up with seven development prototypes that we then applied the proposed fees to. And those are a 100-unit multifamily rental project, 100-unit multifamily owner occupied project, 100-unit town home owner occupied project, 100,000 square foot office project, 150,000 square foot research and development project, a retail restaurant project that would include 20,000 square feet of retail and a 5,000 square foot restaurant, so 25,000 square feet altogether, and a 200-room hotel. So these are the seven prototypes and you'll be seeing these several times in this presentation. So I'm not going to go through a detailed explanation of how the impact fee studies calculated these fees. You heard all of that on April 1st, so I'm just going to try to summarize what they did. We currently have, as you know, a traffic impact fee. It was adopted in 1990 and updated in 1998. In 2009, the general plan was adopted, which calls for a multimodal transportation system including public transit, pedestrians, bicycles and automobiles. The updated fee would be used to pay for transportation improvements in all of these modes. The impact fee study includes 28 projects that are identified in the general plan, in the sustainable transportation plan, the pedestrian and bicycle plan and other recent planning studies. The total net cost of these projects is $88 million. This cost is divided by the number of new trips that are projected from growth estimated in the general plan EIR, and that then results in a maximum supportable fee of $12,541 per trip. That amount of money is then distributed over the various land uses by applying the trip generation factors from the ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. And on the screen here, you have listed some samples of the cost per unit or per square foot of the proposed traffic impact fee. This is the maximum. This is the maximum that could be charged. There's a longer list in your staff report and an even longer list in this fee study itself, but this is just to give you a flavor of what the maximum fee could be on these various land uses. The parks and recreation impact fee starts by calculating the, an existing facility standard, and that comes out to be 1.3, 1.32 acres per thousand people. And that's done by dividing the existing park acreage by the service population, which is defined as the residents of the city and 50% of the workers, the theory being that workers use parks about half as much as residents do. Then the cost of new parks was estimated at about $6.1 million per acre. That is then, you use the park facility standard and the cost per acre to get a per capita cost of the new facilities. That's the per acre cost times the acres per capita existing facility standard. And what that results in is a maximum supportable fee of $8,048 per new resident and $4,024 per new worker. The worker is half the resident. You then apply that to the various land uses by using the estimated occupancy rate for the various land uses and people per use and translate that into units or square feet. And then you come up with these numbers here. Again, this is the maximum that could be charged as calculated by this fee study. For affordable housing, as I said, we had two studies done and it applies to rental housing only because we still have inclusionary zoning for ownership housing. They have to provide 20% median, I mean, moderate income units. So there was a residential nexus study by which the demand for affordable housing that was created, that is created by jobs that are generated because of purchases made by the new households. And then a non-residential nexus study that is based on the demand for affordable housing that's generated by the new job growth that's associated with that non-residential development. So for the residential nexus study, we calculate the gross income in a new residential project, calculate the number of jobs that would be generated by residents in this project from their purchases, and there's a computer model called Implan that does that. Then those new jobs are converted to new households. Then you calculate the income levels of those new households using Kaiser Marston's proprietary computer model. Then you calculate the maximum impact fee by multiplying the affordable, what's called the affordability gap for each of the different income levels by the number of new households at each level. And after you've done all that, you come out to a maximum supportable fee of $35,600 per new residential unit. It's a similar calculation for non-residential. You calculate the new jobs based on density assumptions for each land use. You convert that to new households. You calculate the income levels using KMA's proprietary model. And then you calculate the maximum impact fee by multiplying the affordability gap at each income level by the number of new households at each level. And that results in a maximum supportable fee per square foot for new non-residential development of these numbers that are here on the screen. So, putting all of this together and looking at our seven prototypes, the seven prototypes are listed over here on the left, and in the columns you have the transportation fee, the parks and recreation fee, the affordable housing fee. These are the maximum supportable fees in each of these categories for these seven prototypes and the total is shown over here. I want you to take note of these totals because we'll be looking at this in a bar chart in just a minute. So, what is staff's recommended impact fees? We are recommending, and this is based on how much the market can bear and comparison with other cities and a lot of analysis, we're recommending that the transportation impact fee be set at 20% of the maximum that the impact fee study supports, that the parks and recreation fee be set at 25% of the maximum that the fee study supports. This will distribute the fees evenly between different types of development while limiting the total fee burden on new development. The affordable housing fee for non-residential development is, is recommended as a nominal $2 per square foot fee. This would be on commercial projects to minimize their impact fee capacity for, basically for the other two fees, the transportation and the park and recreation fee. Now, in terms of the affordable housing fee for residential development, rental residential, we are recommending $20,000 per unit, which is 56% of the maximum that's supported by the fee study. This is because the multifamily rental residential market is experiencing the strongest market and the most significant, most significant growth of all of the different land uses. Just by comparison, Berkeley's fee currently is $20,000 per unit. It's scheduled to go up to $28,000 after 2016. There's an option in Berkeley to provide 10% very low income units in lieu of paying this fee. Now, according to our consultants, our recommended fee of $20,000 per unit equates to 6.9% low income units in a project. And I just want to point out that our previous inclusionary zoning, when we did have an inclusionary requirement for rental housing, was 9% moderate income units and 6% very low income units. This equates, I don't know what the number is exactly, but you can just look at this and see, that equates to much more than $20,000 per unit. So this is a veritable bargain by comparison. Developers will also have the option of providing 6.9% low income units in their projects in lieu of paying the fee. So, these are staff's recommended fees. Again, we have the seven prototypes. We have the three categories of fees. You add them all up and this is the total that you get with staff's recommendation. So again, bear these numbers in mind because here is the bar chart that I was mentioning. The maximum fees from the first table, these are the seven prototypes here across the bottom. The maximum fees from the first table are shown here in green and the staff recommended fees are shown here in dark blue. As you can see, they are much, much, much lower than what we could possibly be charging under these fee studies. Now, you may think, well, then we ought to charge more. Well, then you have to look at how it compares to what other cities charge, so you don't go too crazy with, you know, charging too much in fees. Residential rental here, of course, is the highest as a percentage, still less than half when you add up all the fees together, and then the others are quite a bit lower than that. Now, what does it look like when we compare to other cities? We want to look at total development fees, including plan review, permits, impact fees and other fees that are related to development, related to getting a building permit, planning permit for your project. So we want to compare our total impact fees, our total development fees rather, both without and then with the proposed impact fees to other cities' total development fees. But there's a couple of caveats I just want to point out here, and this is in response to some of the comments we've been hearing. First, other cities' fees are a moving target because many, we've, you know, talked to our colleagues in other jurisdictions and they're all talking about raising their impact fees. So if we set the bar at what other cities charge right now, you might find that you're left behind in the future when their fees go way up. So that's just a caveat. Secondly, we've heard a lot about the P-Bid and other kinds of costs that property owners have. I'm not dismissing that. Those are valid concerns and they are something you should take into consideration, but I just want to emphasize that those are not development fees. So considering non-development costs such as property tax assessments is kind of mixing apples and oranges. Other cities also have assessments and other charges and it would be really, it would really complicate the analysis to try to include all of the other costs that property owners have. So we are simply trying to compare development fees to development fees so that we're looking at apples and apples. So again, we have the seven prototypes. We have three on this slide, three on the next slide, and then hotels on the last slide. We've compared ourselves for the residential to Berkeley, Oakland and Walnut Creek. And here we have the permit fees in blue, the plan review fees in red, and the existing impact fees are in this kind of greenish color. So as you can see, Emeryville's over here on the left in each of these. We are below all of our comparators in for residential. When you add our proposed impact fees, of course, multifamily rental residential shoots way up. We would be still below Berkeley, which by the way, as I said, is supposed to increase in 2016, so this bar would be even higher. Oakland, we have heard, is considering increasing fees, so, but as this goes, we would be quite a bit higher than them. And Walnut Creek, we would be a little bit higher than. For multifamily owner occupied, they would only pay the park and traffic fees, not the housing fees. So they go up a little bit. They're still higher than Oakland and Berkeley, not nearly as high as Walnut Creek. Actually, in this one, it looks like Oakland and Emeryville would be about the same for townhomes. Looking at office R&amp;D and retail mix, for R&amp;D, we've swapped out Richmond for Oakland because Richmond is more of a competitor with us for R&amp;D than Oakland is, but for the others, we've kept Oakland as the comparator. So again, here's the bars. We are below all these other cities in all of these three prototypes. If you add our recommended impact fees, we're right up here, you know, with the rest of them. In this one, we're slightly lower than Oakland and a little bit above Berkeley and Walnut Creek. In this one, we're a little bit below Berkeley and above Richmond and, oh, I guess we've included Alameda here as opposed to Walnut Creek. And then for retail mix, we would be a little bit higher than Berkeley, a little bit and a little lower than Oakland and Walnut Creek. Again, just to emphasize, these are moving targets. Those other bars could be going up in the future. For hotels, compared to Berkeley, Oakland and Walnut Creek, this would be our impact fee, we would still be lower than all three. What did the advisory bodies have to say? The Economic Development Advisory Committee talked about this on April 2nd. They unanimously passed two motions to set the fees materially lower than competitive cities and that the Emery Go-Round bus yard should be at the top of the project list for the transportation fee. The Housing Committee, also on April 2nd, unanimously passed a motion supporting the staff recommendation for the affordable housing fees. The Park and Recreation Committee on April 16th unanimously passed a motion supporting the staff recommendation with the caveat that the fee should be set with sensitivity to other costs such as the P-Bid. And the planning commission considered this on April 24th. They did not take a vote or pass a motion. There was no consensus among the commissioners. They had a variety of opinions. Several believe the fee should be lower than comparable cities to maintain our competitive edge, especially since we don't have a BART station. Other commissioners supported the staff recommendation and felt that the rental, rental residential market is strong enough to bear the proposed affordable- market is strong enough to bear the proposed affordable housing fees. Several commissioners were concerned about the scalability issue and the effect of fees on smaller developments, and we can talk more about that if you wish, but we have, we have a problem by differentiating different-sized developments and still complying with state law. And all the commissioners seem to feel that the fee should be reviewed on an annual basis, which they have to be anyway. Now, moving to the amendments to the municipal code. Before the council can adopt any new fees, the municipal code has to be amended in order to establish regulations and procedures for them, so-called enabling legislation. So we are proposing two amendments to the planning regulations. First would be to modify Article 4 of Chapter 5, which is currently called the Affordable Housing Set Aside Program. It would be renamed the Affordable Housing Program. Take the word "set aside" out. And that's for the affordable housing fee. And for all the other fees, we would add a new Article 19 to Chapter 5 entitled Development Impact Fees. That would be for parks and transportation fees now, and it could also apply to any other impact fees that we choose to impose in the future. The Planning Commission reviewed these amendments on June 26th, just last Thursday. They voted five to one to recommend city council approval. The no vote was Commissioner Gunkel, and his no vote was because of the proposed reduction of the housing threshold from 30 units to 10 units. He felt that 10 was too low. He thought that would discourage development, and this only applies to condominiums, but he, he thinks the 10 should be higher. So that's why he voted against, against these code amendments. So just to briefly summarize what these amendments are. The modifications to the Affordable Housing Program, the title would be changed, as I said, and the same change would be made throughout the article. The unit threshold, again, for condominiums would be lowered from 30 to 10. That's where the 20% moderate-income units would kick in, at 10 units instead of 30 as it is now. And by the way, I have a table here comparing us to other cities in the Bay Area. In Alameda County, we are the highest, and I think we're the third-highest in the Bay Area. So other cities' thresholds are anywhere from zero to five to seven to 10. So 10 is certainly not out of line with other cities. This amendment would grant the authority and process for the city to establish and collect fees on rental residential and non-residential projects. There is an alternative compliance, and I want to correct something that was in the staff report. I believe it said that this could be negotiated. For non-residential development, it can be negotiated, and it requires Planning Commission approval. For residential development, there actually is this number in the ordinance. 6.9% low-income units can be provided instead of paying the fee. And one of the handouts that you should have just received is this red line of Section 94509. And this is for the non-residential fee, where if they want to do, if they want to provide the actual low-income or the actual affordable units instead of paying the fee, currently it's worded that the Planning Commission would approve that. We believe that the city council should approve that. This was written by outside council, and we didn't, frankly, didn't catch this, but we think it should say "city council," not "Planning Commission." So we're recommending that change to this ordinance. The amendment also would establish an affordable housing fund to put the fees into, and it would specify that the use of these fees would be obviously used to provide affordable housing. The new development, development impact fee, Article 19, again, would establish the authority for these fees and specify that they're to be used to mitigate impacts of development on the city's ability to provide public facilities. The types of fees are to be categorized into separate types, including but not limited to transportation, parks, recreation. There can be additional fees in the future, such as a government facilities fee, for example, if the city ever decided to do that. It indicates that the calculation of the fees is basically to be done by one of these impact fee studies that establishes the nexus, and then it's established by, the actual fee is established by a resolution of the city council. Payment of the fees generally would be due at the issuance of a building permit. However, that can be deferred until the final inspection or certificate of occupancy. However, what the fee would then be, that would then be due would be whatever was in effect at the time. So if the developer opted to defer payment until their certificate of occupancy, and then subsequently the fees went up, they have to pay the higher fee when they get their CVO, except residential projects, which are exempted from that provision by state law. So we can't raise the fee on residential projects. But non-residential, if they defer and the fee goes up, they have to pay the higher fee. The city obviously can adjust the fee from time to time to reflect updated information about the costs of the projects that are to be funded by it. There are certain exemptions for residential remodeling, and also if an applicant can demonstrate any kind of basis in local, state, or federal law for such an exemption, then they would be eligible for an exemption. There is a provision for refunds if a project is abandoned. There's also, and a number of developers are very interested in this, a provision for fee credits. This is where if the applicant is building as a part of their project, one of the facilities that is specifically identified as to be funded by the fee, then they can apply for a credit of the fee against the project that they would be building. Now, they wouldn't necessarily get 100% of it, but they would get a portion of it, and this decision has to be made on a case-by-case basis by the city council. So they would have to come to you and explain why they think they should get a credit to not have to pay the fee because they are, after all, they are building something that the fee is going to pay for. There's also a procedure for protests. If somebody feels that the fee is unjust or they shouldn't have to pay it for whatever reason, there's an administrative proceeding process through the planning director or community development director, and thereafter, an independent hearing officer. So that's the two amendments to the municipal code. Now, concerning the fiscal impact of these fees, just kind of crystalballing and looking out into the next five years, how much revenue could we expect? Currently, we have 13 projects in the development pipeline. There are more details about these 13 projects are attached to your staff report. They total a little over 2,000 residential units, about 170 hotel rooms, about 248,000 square feet of lab space, 77,000 square feet of office, and 131,000 square feet of retail space. So if you apply the staff recommended fees to these projects, you would generate almost $5 million in transportation fees, which would be sufficient to pay for a little over 5% of the projects on the list. Almost $9 million in park and rec fees, which would be enough to build one and a half acres of new parks. And almost $42 million in the affordable housing fee, which would be enough to get us about 220 affordable units. So total of about $55.5 million generated by these fees over the next five years if all these 13 projects come to pass. The staff recommendation is that you take public testimony about the proposed development impact fees tonight. Then after a motion to read by title only and taking public testimony, you adopt the first reading of the amendment adding Article 19, development impact fees. And also, after a motion to read by title only and taking public testimony, that you adopt the first reading of the other ordinance, re-titling and amending Article 4, the Affordable Housing Program. I just want to clarify the next steps here. I think there may be a little bit of confusion on some people's parts that the city council is actually establishing impact fees tonight. That is not the case. So at next, the next city council meeting on July 15th, you will be requested to pass these two ordinances of enabling legislation on second reading, and then to pass three resolutions establishing the impact fees for affordable housing, park and recreation facilities, and transportation facilities. That's in two weeks. That's not tonight. So that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
From council first before we hear from the public?
Mayor, excuse me. Charlie, can you clarify the, the one revision on the development impact fee ordinance? Thank you.
Yes, yes. Where is that?
Section 9-5.1913, subsection G.
Thank you. There was another revision that you also have on the dais to the fee credit. This is in the proposed new Article 19. That is just to clarify that basically that the prevailing wage provisions for an applicant who agrees to build a project in exchange for getting a credit from the fee, that that does then not mean that prevailing wage would apply to their entire development project. It would only apply to the public facility that they would be building. That's basically what this language says. Right?
Correct.
Yeah. It says it in a more legalistic way than that, but that's what, that's what it means.
All right. Let's hear from the public.
So once again, you've been recommended from the staff to take public testimony. Don't listen to it. If somebody comes up with an idea to change your mind, don't listen to that person and instead do what the staff recommends. So take public testimony, but put your, you know, listen to the radio, whatever, while the public is speaking because what they say should have no consequence, and instead you should just do what the staff recommends. An absurd thing. Once again, I defer to the, I, I'd like to tell the city manager to, to change that moving forward, please. It's absurd. Okay. Tonight, you were, you were told by the staff, same staff, by the way, that recommended you, you let Madison Marquette developer off the hook to the tune of $6 million that the grand jury thought was a bad idea. It's the same staff. They told you to, that we should have a hearing to people, to developers, for instance, like John Nady, who doesn't want to have to pay the fee, and you should, that we should have to, the taxpayer should have to pay for, have a hearing for him. And there, if you notice what he said, Mr. Bryant said, there's nothing really of substance about the hearing. But I tell you, I sat in a hearing, in a, that was set up by the, the urban forestry ordinance, conducted by the building works, building, I'm sorry, the Public Works Department, because pulte homes had cut down every single tree on 59th Street illegally. And then I complained until there was a hearing because the urban forestry ordinance mandated that there be a hearing. So I said, I think that the developer should pay for those illegally cut-down trees like the ordinance says he should. The developer said he didn't want to pay. And so the, Mr. Kaufman of the Public Works, listen, at the hearing, listened to what I said, and then just ruled without any quantifying or qualifying, no, I deem, Maurice Kaufman deemed that the, the pulte homes should not have to pay a fine, and that was the end of it. So this hearing that we're talking about tonight, I don't think, you know, you need to find out more about this. There needs to be protections. The people need to be protected, and you need to find out about what Mr. Bryant is talking about regarding this hearing in the, in the ordinance. Okay. Also, Mr. Bryant had this very complex formula about how to determine these fees, but what he didn't talk about is Emeryville specifically. What are we really talking about here? How much land are we talking about that is going to be impacted? Can we get impact fees on moving forward? Well, the answer is almost nothing. This town has been almost completely developed, very little fallow land left, very little, as a percentage of our town, it's a very small amount that we can collect these fees on. And so you should plug, I think you should plug that into your figures.
Your time is up.
And that we should charge more.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
Hi. Just want to make a comment about the fees. You know, I think it would have been nice to have a task force of the developers and people that are interested and see what they have to offer. I mean, rather than just, you know, deciding on a fee and some projects make it and some don't. I mean, sure, they have a chance to come here, but if you put them together, you might get some ideas that you'd at least know what they're willing to pay, what they could afford to pay. The comparisons made by the staff, you know, there's 101 cities in this region, and I go to all the A-Bag meetings. There's lots of different ways fees are collected, like Redwood City collects one fee, and they figure out how it's assigned. There's a lot of other ways that could potentially, this could potentially be done that should probably be looked at. And so if you want to look at other cities that just charge fees in the same way, then you're making a comparison. But do we really compare to these neighboring cities? Have they had any real development? They haven't really had any development. So if we want to be like them, then we won't have anything either. To sock it to the projects that are in line, that's kind of, that's kind of not really fair. But you should at least put them together and get their input, at least have a meeting with all the developers and see what they have to say before you adopt the fees. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm Mayor Asher. Steven Keller, resident of Pacific Park Plaza, and I'm before you tonight to encourage you to be more reasonable and prudent in your actions tonight. I'm here to echo and reiterate what several of your appointed committees and some planning commissioners have recommended to you, and that's to charge a lower rate of impact fees than has been suggested by the staff. By charging fees that are too high, among many negative things that I feel could result, the most detrimental would be overall housing affordability. Our housing cost in Emeryville is already so high that we are seeing an increase in rental vacancies due to the increase in rental rates. Many young people, some with families, are moving away, and I can give you three examples who have all moved to Oakland because of the rates of rent in Emeryville. While some see these fees as a way to encourage development of for-sell or condominium projects, we know that there are more serious circumstances that are causing this problem in the market, and overcharging rental units for this is not going to fix that problem. An additional fact we have to keep in mind while increasing these fees, this current cost of development in Emeryville, excluding the Sherman Williams site and Site B, nearly every development project, every development site we have either needs site remediation, demolition, or both. So those are added costs that a developer is going to have to cover. In order to make the developments, projects viable, most developers will have to make cuts or lower the quality of their project in order to make up these costs that we're going to burden it with. Beyond these reasons, to justify caution for the rates we increase, there's also the consideration of how restricted these funds are. These funds can be used, the funds we're collecting will be used for very specific items in very specific ways with little or no flexibility. And you think we've now lost redevelopment. This is money we used to give developers to build here. We've now taken, that's been taken away, and now we're going to charge them fees on top of that. So we're kind of giving them a double whammy. I just feel like the fees as they're recommended by the staff are akin to killing our cash cow when instead we should be looking for the goose that lays the golden eggs, and that such a goose does exist. Thank you.
I think you, as a council, have noted that both downtown Oakland and downtown Berkeley have significant development happening right now. And they have a much higher fee schedule than we currently have. And we have lost, as a percentage of our city, a significant income source. The redevelopment agency was so major in proportion to us than any other city in California, maybe a few in Southern California, might have had the same scale of redevelopment. But the, in the Bay Area, Emeryville was in that position. And certainly in San Francisco, boy, their costs and fees are dramatically higher, and you'll note the volume of development happening there. I don't think we should think of ourselves as being in a deficit frame of mind for our land value and our develop, development possibilities going forward. I think we will be very competitive with the fee structure that the staff has recommended. And I think it's prudent for our economic stability going forward that we have these impact fees. Thank you very much.
One else?
Good evening. Hi, I'm Felix Ao Young. I'm a senior project manager at EH Housing. We are affordable housing developer. I'm here in support of the impact fees. However, it's decided at the end by council, the amount thereof. I think Emeryville is in a very special location where the market is extremely strong, and you have a history of development here. And the longer that you wait in terms of implementing an impact fee, the longer that potential revenue stream is being deflected away from the ability to provide more affordable housing. I think your consultant, Marston Kirsten, aptly pointed out that the market will charge what it can when it sets its rental rates, and therefore, as long as it's feasible in this very strong market currently, that I think developments will still occur here. And at the same time, you will be provided a potential source for developing additional housing set aside for lower incomes. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor.
housing set aside for lower incomes. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, and audience. My name is Pilar Lorenzana Campbell, and I am here on behalf of an organization called the Nonprofit Housing Association of Northern California. In short, NPH is a membership organization. Our members are about 750 affordable housing developers, policymakers, as well as community-based advocacy organizations. So, I'm here today to voice our strong support for staff-recommended fees that are included in your staff memo. I specifically want to, I specifically wanted to address three specific things. We strongly support staff's suggestion that the city council, at a next future meeting, adopt a $20,000 impact fee for multifamily residential, noting that the maximum allowed is actually $35,600. So, I think that this is a very good feasible fee. We also want to support the fact, the fact that an ordinance will enforce the said fee on projects that are size 10 units and greater. I think this compares quite nicely with the rest of the cities across the region as well, not just in the East Bay. The one minor suggestion that we would suggest that council take into consideration is that, given the strong market for development in Emeryville, that's both cited in the staff report and in the Nexus study authored by KMA, we would suggest that the council consider a $4 per square foot commercial linkage fee, as opposed to the $2 per square foot commercial linkage fee. As a counterpoint, I will offer that many, many cities across the region are either in the process of undertaking Nexus studies to implement a fee or to revise or increase their fee. For example, the city of Mountain View, which I would like to compare, also has a very strong market. They actually charge, right now, they adopted a fee in 2013 that puts them at $10 per square foot, and they're considering actually increasing that because of the strength of their market. And so, lastly, I want to leave you with a little bit of data about why this housing impact fee is really quite important. The UC Davis Center for Regional Change compared data on the number of workers that make minimum wage versus the number of housing units that are affordable to those minimum wage earners. For the city of Emeryville, there are 7.8 minimum wage jobs for every single affordable house, home. So, what that really means is that...
Could you repeat that, please?
Sure. There are 7.8 minimum wage jobs for every single home that's available within the city limits. So, if you are a minimum wage earner, you're competing against 6.8 other people for that one home. So, the data from the state shows that the city has a deficit of 1,558 affordable rental homes, given that the city has more than 3,000 minimum wage jobs. So, the proposal to do the impact fee at 20,000, the proposal to do the impact fees collectively will result in $42 million available for the next five years, given the projects that are in your pipeline. And if you are able to take those funds and leverage them against federal tax credits, you stand to gain between 220 affordable units, or we think probably even more than that, which will make a significant dent to your deficit of, again, 1,158 homes. So, I just want to leave you with that. Thank you very much for your leadership on this issue and for, I want to commend staff for the work that they've done. Thank you.
Excuse me, for those that have spoken at the public hearing, it would be helpful if you can sign in unless you wish to be anonymous, so I can get the spelling of your name correct for the record. Thank you.
You can just give that to the city clerk.
And I will follow suit. Yes, thank you.
Or you can give me the yellow, either one.
I'd be happy. I'm Tim Frank, and I'm the director of the Center for Sustainable Neighborhoods, and we support policies and projects that help build sustainable communities and regions. And we're pleased to actually support the staff recommendation. We think that the $20,000 fee for affordable housing is appropriate. We appreciate the level of thought that went into establishing that and actually comparing it with the neighbors. We think that's critically important. And would note that actually, if you look at the results in Berkeley, that the market's quite strong there and is showing itself well. People are, there are a number of projects in the pipeline, and they do not seem to be afraid of the fee. And as you noted, there's actually a scheduled increase coming. So, the fee you are looking at tonight is actually something we think is actually appropriate. We think it'll be a huge benefit to Emeryville, that we desperately need these units, and this will be a way to actually fund the development of projects that will provide Emeryville the resources that it needs. The one thing that I would actually like to recommend is a, something slightly at variance with staff is, in fact, exactly what Pilar has actually recommended by increasing the commercial fee. We do believe in the idea of many hands make light work, and we think that it's important to have a strong component of contribution from the commercial side to help, in addition to what you're getting from the residential developers, and we think that's appropriate. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Levin. I'm the policy director with East Bay Housing Organizations. We are a nonprofit, membership-based organization doing education and advocacy work on affordable housing issues throughout the East Bay, and we've been doing that work for about 30 years now. First, I'd just like to thank the staff and your consultants for a really fine job. These are really solid Nexus studies that will provide you with the basis for fees that are both legally defensible and economically feasible, and both of those are very important. In general, we support the staff recommendations. Like many cities, Emeryville has lost important tools for affordable housing. The loss of redevelopment has cost the state $1 billion a year in affordable housing funds throughout the state. That's coupled with legal challenges to inclusionary zoning, so that you no longer are able to apply your inclusionary requirement to rental housing. So, we really need to look for new tools to meet the demand, particularly for rental housing. The housing market in the region and in the city is extremely strong. I think it's very clear that new development can absorb these fees. They're not excessive, but the need for affordable housing is greater than ever. On the non-residential side, as the last two speakers have said, we also would encourage you to consider setting the housing impact fee on non-residential development at $4 a square foot. New commercial development creates new demand for housing, including affordable housing. Emeryville already has a substantial jobs-housing imbalance, and as you create more jobs without creating more housing, you create all kinds of other problems in terms of traffic and pollution and greenhouse gas emissions, as people have to commute in rather than being able to live in the community where they work. Reasonable fees do not discourage development. We see that in, you know, the hundreds of cities that have reasonable impact fees. They do not increase the price of housing. Housing will be sold for whatever the market rate is. I think it's simply incorrect to think that developers are somehow charging less than they could, and a fee comes along, and now they're somehow able to charge something more than that. Frankly, at the rate that housing prices are going up, within a matter of six to 12 months, the market will increase enough to increase most of these fees. So, I think you really need to take that into account. Lastly, I know there's a lot of concern about being competitive with other cities, and other speakers have talked about other cities also increasing their fees. Tonight, Alameda is considering increasing their impact fees, actually using the same consultant for the Nexus study that you folks did. Fremont is in the middle of updating their Nexus study. The city of Oakland, which has long resisted development impact fees, other than a small commercial jobs-housing linkage fee, is about to release an RFP for a very large-scale Nexus study looking at transportation, public infrastructure, and affordable housing. And Walnut Creek has also expressed interest in looking at increasing their fees, particularly in their priority development areas. So, I think even with the proposed increases, you're going to be extremely competitive and will continue to be a strong attractor of development, as you have been for many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak?
Good evening. My name is Bruce Dorfman. I'm working on the Sherwin-Williams site, and obviously will be impacted by these increased fees. First, I just wanted to say, I was glad that San Francisco was taken out as a comp from your April 1 hearing, when it was mentioned. I just read a report that was showing that some of the recent condominium projects that have just opened are now charging upwards of $1,200 a square foot for their housing. Currently, housing condominium prices in Emeryville are down in the low 400s per square foot, so it's three times the cost in San Francisco. It's a much different market. Likewise, rents are two to three times what the rents are here. Our big issue in the Bay Area as a whole is the fact that we have many more jobs than we have housing units, and jobs are being created at a rate of two to three times the rate of new homes. Providing any kind of, providing any kind of increased hurdles to creating new housing, it doesn't necessarily stop the housing from occurring, it just delays it. And that is one of the issues that is going to continue to resonate. So, again, while we understand the fees, we aren't here to necessarily take a position one way or another, we would make some recommendations, specifically, number one, that with regard to park fees, that what we've seen in other communities that has been very successful is that there's actually recognition of private and public open space that's being created, and there's, as opposed to discretionary levels, there's actually a formulaic determination of credits based upon that, and I would encourage the city to be considering that. And I guess, taking that a step further, I mean, I think that the city would be well-advised above and beyond the framework for its public parks that it wants to see, to look to private developers, also to promote other public open spaces that could be used. And one way to do that is through a fee structure that recognizes the creation of those spaces. Finally, I'd just like to add that the city of Oakland, although there's been much discussion about it, they are your neighboring city, fees are comparable to where you're at today. And in the near term, they're not going up. So, and I'll take it a step further. Fees are higher in Berkeley, there was a lot of development there. Fees are higher in San Francisco, there's a lot of development there. Fees are very low in Oakland, there's very little development. So, I'm not sure if there's necessarily that correlation, but I would just want to clarify that the fees are lower in Oakland, and there actually are a number of projects that are going to be moving forward there shortly. Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard? No? Okay. Want to hear from council? Or entertain a motion?
Any discussion?
That, I said, do you, can we hear from council or entertain a motion?
Well, I'd just like to say, I really appreciate all the comments that came forward on this issue. It's a serious issue and one that the council has really got to consider strongly. With the loss of redevelopment, as a couple of the speakers mentioned, to operate the city and to really move forward on capital projects, we have to find new sources. And so, I thank all the members that came forward with the comments. I'd also like to thank the staff, because I believe, as many of the public said, these studies, these Nexus studies, were very thoughtfully done, they have a wealth of information in them. I believe that they're going to provide a very firm foundation if we move forward with these impact fees. That being said, we are not discussing the rate tonight. All we're discussing is setting up the framework for the impact fees. That's my understanding. Is that correct, Charlie?
Well, yeah, I think you can discuss the rate, if you wish, but you won't be setting the rate until your next meeting.
Right, okay. So, with that, I would like to ask, to read by title only, the development impact fees.
Could you just make a quick comment?
Sure.
You know, I really love it that Emeryville is not compared to Mountain View, because Mountain View is the home of Google, and Google has created this, housing was one of the companies that created this house. So, I meant, $10 a square foot, that's probably really cheap for them, and they probably should be paying a lot more. But I think there's a balance that we have to have here, too. It's like, we're talking about affordable housing, but also, we have to think about having jobs in this town and having good jobs. So, I think there's a balance that we have to walk here. It's one thing to have all this housing and then seeing everybody leave the town to go to Mountain View, but I prefer to have an opportunity to have people live here and work in this town. So, I think there has to be a lot of balance when it comes to these fees.
Ruth?
I want to make a comment also, which is that people have talked about the elimination of redevelopment as being a precipitating factor of why we're looking at new funding. And I, I just want to say something about, there were a lot of comments about the market, and what the market does will affect what we do in terms of what we can collect by how our land is used. And what redevelopment afforded us an opportunity to do is to push against and to try to encourage where the market wasn't willing to go. And we poured millions of millions of dollars into San Pablo Avenue in the part that is within the Emeryville city limits, and it looks, and it feels a little bit different than north of our city and south of our city. And that's because people weren't willing to invest in San Pablo Avenue, but we decided that was an important piece of our city to do that. What we've lost, and I want to make this, I just want to name it for what it is, is we've lost a tool where we don't have to rely on market forces and developers earning, you know, a profitable deal for them in order to, or profitable enough in order for them to come here. And what you're seeing tonight is the city council faced with a decision about just having to be part of the regular market forces that impact for good or for hard times. And we've seen the housing bubble bust, bubble burst, and we've seen boom times until the dot-com bust happened here. So, we have this, at this point in our history, that we need to look at this, that we don't have a tool left separate from, or at least separate enough from, regular market forces. Then we are combined with just our own geographic constraints, and there are advantages to where the city of Emeryville is located, and there's disadvantages. And everywhere, there's a BART station, which we don't have. Transit-oriented development, which has been, has brought a lot of housing right into, onto transit hubs, have been beneficial in virtually every community that has done TOD, transit-oriented development. We don't have that as part of our makeup to try to, so then what we're left with is freeway off-ramps and how easy we are to that, to developing close to that form of transportation. So, we're kind of behind the eight ball here about how we develop with market forces based on the infrastructure that we're given. And we can tinker with the amounts and the fees or whatever, but I just felt like I wanted to put a larger context to how we're looking at all of this, because this is not a rosy picture, and in good economic times, you know, the ship rises, and when it isn't good, then everybody suffers. But we did lose a tool that could help private development go where it didn't want to go initially. And we see some lasting benefit on San Pablo Avenue of that. And there are other places we can look in town where the effort of redevelopment had a lasting, and I think, positive influence. So, those are just general comments. It's not around the specifics of anything that we're going to be adopting here. The one specific that I do want to talk about, that the Housing Committee acknowledged, was dropping our unit requirement from 30 to 10 makes an awful lot of sense. And I think the dissenting planning commissioner, if he'd known what happens in neighboring cities and would have, would not have objected. cities, and would have, would not have objected to lowering that. So, those are my comments.
I also have some things to say. I want to say that even though RDA is no longer here, it was a tool to bring us to exactly this moment, right? That the way that we developed and added value in Emeryville is something that is long-lasting. It's not just centered upon those individual developments, it's not just for that one moment in time, it's teed us up for this very moment to acknowledge that we're a desirable place to live, right? And to do the things that we really want to do as a council, to make sure that we have a balance between jobs and housing, and then also, to address what is an absolute emergency in terms of affordable housing. We can't wait on affordable housing. And so, the impact fees, and they're not going to get us all the way there, in terms of what we, what we need to do. But this is something that we need to be doing, that everybody in the region needs to be doing. It's the responsible and right thing. And I was glad to see people talking about raising the rate a little bit for the commercial developments. What was striking to me in reading the fee study was, even though we have these very firm kind of calculations around the NEXUS, they also acknowledge that commercial developments bring in security staff, people who clean those buildings after hours, and that it's really always an underestimate of those second-shift workers as well, that just aren't figured into the math. So, I look forward to implementing the impact fees. I think it's, it's the right next step. And I think it's, redevelopment did exactly what it was supposed to do. And so, here we are, and Emeryville is a wonderful place to live, and we should draw people toward these resources that we've invested so much time and thought into. And so, with that?
You have a motion to read by title only?
Second.
Did you? Okay, thanks, Kurt.
So, this is on Article 19, and it's with the amendment that staff recommended.
Correct. In ordinance of the City Council, the city of Emeryville, adding Article 19 to Chapter 5 of Title IX of the City of Emeryville Planning Regulations titled Development Impact Fees and repealing, excuse me, Article 3 of Chapter 2 of Title III of the City of Emeryville Municipal Code titled Traffic Facilities Impact Fee Fund.
Move the ordinance. I need a second. Step up, guys.
I was waiting for somebody on the side.
Anyone opposed?
No.
No. Okay.
Wait.
Can we have a?
Should we have roll call?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Councilmember Breitman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Number West is excused. Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Aye.
Move to read by title only, ordinance Affordable Housing Program.
I'll second that, Nora.
Again, with the staff-recommended modification.
With the revision, yes.
Yeah.
We have to do a roll call.
On the title only.
Title only.
Oh, okay.
In ordinance of the City Council, the city of Emeryville, amending Article 4 of Chapter 5 of Title IX of the City of Emeryville Planning Regulations titled Affordable Housing Set-Aside Program and Retitling as Affordable Housing Program.
Move the ordinance.
I'll second.
Anyone opposed?
Nope.
And we have a roll call.
Oh, sorry.
Councilmember Breitman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West is excused. Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Ooh, aye. Okay. All right. And then, policy items, we're on to administrative items. This is item 8.1, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville Approving the Plans and Specifications for the Peninsula Fire Station Renovation.
And clock.
And clock, says Kurt. Maurice.
The room empties here.
It's you, too, Maurice. There's no reason why.
Lot of interest in that item.
There was. There was a lot of interest, yeah.
Well, the housing especially, really critical.
Yeah, they came out in force.
Mayor Asher, members of the City Council, this is a project that we've been working on for a little over a year now, where we, at that time, we had found mold in our fire station building, and we started urgently on a rehabilitation project to do a waterproofing project. As we got into looking at the building, it turned into more of a rehabilitation of most of the facility. So, this is a picture of what the facility looks like right now. As part of the project, we're going to be doing work on the roof. As you know, we recently terminated leases on the antennas that were housed on top of that building. They've actually come in and removed one of the antenna systems for T-Mobile. We're still waiting for Sprint to come through and do that. But we're going to be redoing the roof, and there's a number of other exterior improvements we're going to be doing to the building, listed here. I won't read them to, I guess I could read them to you, or doing the clockwork, roof replacement, a number of different things here, to the brick, applying waterproofing to the brick as well, new photovoltaic systems on canopies and on the roof, on a rear-end roof, and repainting the parapet railing on the flat roof. And this is an image of what the building will look like when we're done. On the outside, we're going to be putting these canopies here on the outside, which will be photovoltaic canopies, and they're going to help to prevent the sun glaring into the kitchen area. On the interior, there's a number of improvements we're doing to the kitchen, and the restrooms, ADA facilities, upgrades, and so on, so forth. There is a clock on the outside of the building. You can barely see it, but it's on this tower. It's never really worked properly, if you've never been able to see it. The issue with that clock is you can't really maintain it. There's no real way to get into the building and get access to the clock. So, it's probably been accurate twice a day for a number of years. So, we would like to, as part of this project, incorporate and upgrade to that clock. And I have the architect here to speak on that. There's a number of options she's come up with, and she has a recommendation, so I'll introduce you to Patricia Alakon with Raffa.
Okay, thanks, Maurice.
Just if you want to scroll down here.
Which is, changes the picture.
Which changes the option.
Oh, okay. Great. Okay, thank you, Maurice. So, as Maurice mentioned, the primary issues with the clock tower are visibility. Currently, you can't read the clock because of the low contrast between the numbers and the brick. And number two is the serviceability of the motor, which is from the inside, in the hose tower, where the firefighters' equipment is. So, it's really hard to access and to provide a code-compliant, OSHA-compliant service platform from the inside. So, before I get into our solutions, then, I'll just say that the issue of not being able to service the motor from the inside led us to the idea of having a clock with the motor, which is serviceable from the outside, so we wouldn't have to use the hose tower, we'd use a cherry picker to fix it. So, that approach really opens up possibilities in terms of the face of the clock, because the motor, which goes in, now needs to be covered by a metal plate. We can play with the size and the color of that metal plate, which gives us the opportunity for more contrast between the letters and the background. So, I'm just going to go through a few options, and really spend time on the final one. This one is kind of the minimal size of the plate to cover up the access into the motor. This is just changing the colors. This is saying, you know, let's look at letters, letters and numbers and hands that start to match the graphics on the total building. You'll see a picture on that. This is another color iteration. This is saying, you know, we have the opportunity to really make this plate be a bigger element, and then give us the contrast that we need. This option doesn't provide us the contrast. This starts to do it, but it doesn't really work with the rest of the building. This starts to do it, in our opinion, we pull from the colors of the existing metal roofing, which we're actually going to be replacing with the same color, because it's already part of the whole color palette of the building, excuse me. And this is our final solution, which unfortunately, you can't really read the writing here. This is the lettering for the fire station right here, and it's raised letters that are brass in color. So, our proposal, then, intends to have the background of the clock match the color of the existing roofing, and have the letters and the hands match the color and the lettering on the fire station. So, it really kind of pulls existing elements together. I think it's going to make the thing, the clock, more readable for people driving down the street more than twice a year. And it's also going to make it, serviceability not be an issue that interrupts the working of the fire, the firefighters from a day-to-day point of view, because if things need to get fixed, if the clock needs to, that motor needs to be accessed, it can happen from the exterior. So, it's a, you know, we think it's a solution that ties together all the components, the palette, the color and material palette, and returns functionality back to the clock. It's not making a grandiose statement. I think there's already a lot of activity happening in that tower with the brick pattern. It's not competing with that, it's just really adding another layer to make the thing functional and readable. If you have any questions?
I do, actually, I have two questions. If I remember correctly, those hands can be lit up at night from backlighting. Are you planning on doing that?
That was not, we were not aware of that component.
There's other models out there that you can light them up from behind, so you can see the clock at night. And the other thing, there's a, how about resetting and adjusting the time? Are you going to have a remote controller?
Yeah, the controller will be remote. So, I mean, hopefully, there's not going to be a lot of reason to have to get up and back into the clock anymore. And certainly, we can look into the various options for lit or unlit.
Yeah. I think I gave you some, a number, probably about a year and a half ago, some that had the lit hands, which would be really nice to, so you can see it at night.
Right. We could, we can look into models. I mean, you could actually put a lamp on there to just shine it on the clock.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Or you can get some lit numbers. I think I'd be concerned about maintenance of light bulbs on a clock.
They're LEDs that you put behind that.
I think that's a good idea, Kurt.
I want to see it at night.
Yeah, yeah. Anyone else? Comments or questions?
I just have a comment. I don't think the brass makes sense, because of the contrast issue. So, I think both the hands and letters of the clock, and the letters on the building should be black.
Hmm.
And same with the letters on the, on the fire station.
I think, if I may, may I address that? My concern with the letters on the building being black is that that's also not going to have the contrast that you need, the black against the brick, maybe.
It has more than the brass does.
Um.
That's why I'm suggesting it.
You mean on the clock, or you mean the letters on the, on the, on the building?
On this one?
On the brick.
Maybe, maybe what we can do is take a picture of the existing lettering to see what's up, up close, and see how it looks, and maybe bring it back.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Even the photograph, you could barely see what.
You're, you're, you're right, you're right.
There's no contrast there.
It's more legible than this photo looks, than this photo looks.
So, I think would be a mistake to keep that.
Can this be in the first phase of the job, too?
I'm sorry.
Do that first.
Can this be in the first phase of the job?
Phase one, as quick as you want it.
We want it quick.
All right. Well, we could, you know, we could continue to look at the, you know, the contrast, creating more contrast between the hands, the lettering, and the background, considering that we have competing backgrounds, the proposed green to match the roof, and then the brick. So, we need to come up with a color that's going to work with both, whether it's black, or silver, or some other color. I'd like to study that a little bit.
So, we can, we can move forward, whatever you want out there. But I'd just like to get permission to advertise the project, and then we can, we can finalize the design of the, of the clock. I'm hoping, as we award the contract, give it up. Maybe put an allowance in there to deal with the mechanism we're going to use.
Sure. And then, we can also look at the lighted, the lighted hands, to see what the color options are with that. That's going to take us into another direction. You want to light up the whole sign.
Right. And so, when we come back to award the contract, we can hopefully get agreement on what the mechanism is going to look like.
That sounds good. Can we hear from the, oh, go ahead, Nora.
Yeah, I have some questions for Maurice. Maurice, how long is the station going to be closed for this construction?
I anticipate it's going to be four to six months of work on the project.
That's about right.
That's, that's very concerning to me, that because the access to the peninsula from Alameda County Fire, from Hollis Street, could be severely impacted coming across the freeway. Four to six months is a long time to have the peninsula in a situation where you possibly couldn't get your engines out there for 10 to 15 minutes. That's a real problem.
Well, we're, you know, we're going to make sure that the emergency preemption's working as it's supposed to on all the signals. And, you know, we have space in the fire station. We've already confirmed that all the dispatch is going to work over there for the two different crews that we have. Is my understanding right? So, we're going to have to kind of make do without two fire stations for the.
Well, the biggest concern out there is, what is the status of the sprinkler system at the Watergate?
They're almost completed. They're not signed off on it yet, are they? Did George sign off on the, the water suppression system, the fire suppression system?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
I think they're pretty close to completion. You won't be starting for at least six months, right?
Well, no. We're probably going to start advertising the project in August. And then we'll receive bids, probably an award in October. So.
Well, we want to make sure that you don't close that fire station until the suppression system is working in Watergate.
We can, we can work around that. Hopefully, hopefully, that's not going to, hopefully it's done real soon. We're going to, you know, once we receive the bids, we're going to want to move forward as quick as we can.
But let's, maybe we can push them to move forward a little faster, Watergate.
We can talk to them.
Then, the other issue I have, connected with this redoing of this, what is our policy going to be about allowing anybody to put anything on that roof? We're not going to let those guys come back on the roof, I hope.
At this point, we're not, yes. We're not. We are not recommending, we've asked for them to, to stay off the roof at this point, so they're removing all their equipment. They haven't even approached us to try to renew the leases, or to try to put more telecom equipment on the site. So, at this point, there won't be anything.
Sabrina, is there a way to make a definitive statement that nothing is to be put on the roof? You know, I think they wrecked the roof. It wasn't a good roof to begin with. But I didn't, I don't think they did it.
It didn't help the roof. The roof's original to the building. It probably, you know, with all the traffic we had up there, I'm sure it helped to degrade the roof.
But we have to be preventative about this, and not have people up there tromping around.
And you all, I believe it was two or three meetings ago, did terminate the lease up there. So, any new activity up there would have to come to you for approval.
Very good.
Other questions from council, or?
I'm making motion to move the project.
Okay, let's, let's hear from the public really quick.
I just want to agree with Ruth. I think the black lettering is definitely more noticeable, and the backdrop is certainly important. Thank you.
I move the resolution.
Anyone else from the public want to be heard? Okay. Second?
Second.
Anyone opposed?
Go ahead.
No? Okay, all right. Moving on to 10.1. This is you again, Charlie.
Right. Well, this is a bit anticlimactic, I guess. But what the, what the Planning Commission did on June 26th, I've already told you.
Yes, you have.
Two of the things they did, anyway, they considered the Doctors Rezoning and General Plan Amendment, and you have taken that up tonight. They also considered the draft housing element. They did approve that with some changes to a couple of the policies, you know, wording about, about building design. And that will be coming to you for your consideration at your next meeting on July 15. And then, they also recommended approval of the amendments to the Planning Regulations-related impact fees, which you have just introduced on first reading. All three of these items obviously have to receive final approval from the council, so they are not appealable to the council.
Okay. Council members, communications and reports, anyone?
I'm not sure if I'm supposed to say this exactly, but there's sometimes a...
I'm not sure if I'm supposed to say this exactly, but there's sometimes a blurring, but the Alameda County Transportation Commission is hard at work at putting Measure BB back on the ballot in, in November, and I wish to make myself available this fall to talk to any and all peoples about it, so, yeah.
Thank you, Ruth. Anyone else report on meetings attended, or anything? Nope? Okay. We have advisory body vacancies for the Child Development Center, on the Parks and Rec Committee, and also the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District. We still need...
We're missing out, guys.
We are, we are. We still need a representative. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.